Roll call, Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Calley.
Here.
Mr. Magnner.
Here.
Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Ms. Rainey.
Here.
Ms. Shulist.
Here.
Ms. Senyard.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
And Mr. Butler.
Present.
We have a quorum.
If you'll join me for the opening prayer and pledge.
Lord, we mean today to take matters of business, get our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. We'll move to approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Rainey, Senyard. Any additional discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
And Mr. Butler.
Aye. Thank you. We'll go to citizens' comments.
There are none tonight.
Thank you. We will move to approve the minutes from the July 12, 2022 work session and July 12, 2022 regular meeting.
Take a motion to approve.
Second.
Calley, Williams. Any additional discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
And Mr. Butler.
Aye. Thank you, guys. We'll move to new business item one. PC Resolution PC 48-22, site plan, one church home, 7.49 acres, map 21, parcel 52, current zoning RS 40 residential, property owner GF- GCF LLC. Mr. Sullivan, if you could please.
Staff report for PC 48-22. The project is one church home. Fulmer Lucas Engineering, Inc. has submitted to the City of Fairview a request for a site plan approval of one church home. The property contains 7.49 acres and is zoned RS 40 single-family residential. Project is located at map 21 and parcel 52, and that's along Highway 96 just west of Horn Tavern Road. The properties adjacent to this project are zoned RS 40 single-family residential. For the letter of intent, construction of a new church for one church home, Fairview. One Church Home, formerly Grace Chapel Fairview, presented a conditional use request to the Board of Zoning Appeals on September 24, 2020. There, the Board of Zoning Appeals granted use permissions for a religious facility to be constructed with a maximum occupancy of 1,500 on this current property. The project property has been reviewed by staff and meets the base zoning bulk and area requirements for the RS 40 zoning for this use. The material percentages have been included in the packet. One Church Home is proposing ingress egress to the project with means of one access point on Highway 96. The applicant is currently securing a highway entrance permit from TDOT to permit this proposed access. There was no traffic impact study required. One Church Home is proposing 386 total parking spaces, which exceeds the required 267 spaces for the 800-seat church building. Plan sheets have been provided showing the location, dimension, and design of all roadways, entrances, sidewalks, parking, access, and other pertinent surface items, and meet the requirements for each of the items. The conditions of approval included in Planning Commission Resolution PC 48-22 for one church home, plans set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction meeting, provide documentation of all applicable state and federal permits prior to pre-construction meeting. Approval of development plan should be valid for one year from the date of Planning Commission approval. Any modification to the approved plans shall be submitted to city for review and may result in Planning Commission reconsideration. That's all of my notes.
Thanks, sir. If we have anyone representing the applicant who would like to say anything, we will welcome you to the podium. If you could just state your name for me, sir.
Yes, I'm Jay Fulmer, Fulmer Lucas Engineering, and Rob McElvee is here. He's the architect of record on the project. And I think we've got a lot of other people here demonstrating support for the project. But we appreciate your consideration and happy to answer any questions. We really appreciated how we worked with staff to accommodate everything that they were asking and looking forward to starting.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for the applicant?
I just was hoping staff could educate everybody on exactly how we got to this point on having RS 40 with effectively commercial use, Boza approved, just so that everyone's clear.
That is fine. For several uses, one of those being religious facilities, there are use permitted being within several of the zonings, which would include several of the single-family zones, RS 40 being one of those. For the religious facility to be as a use in a zone lot, there is a requirement to go before Board of Zoning Appeals. That sets the use as well as the maximum occupancy for that structure. Both of those were set at that Board of Zoning Appeals meeting in 2020. But because of the unique characteristics of such a use, that does go before Boza. One of the main unique characters, I'd say, traffic. Most commercial facilities of this size, with the parking of this quantity, your daily trips would be pretty high. Being a religious facility, most of the traffic is within just a couple of hours, usually one, maybe two days a week. So again, that's why it would go before Boza and why it would be allowed in some residential zones.
Thank you, sir.
And they're not asking for any variance on the materials? It meets our standards, correct?
The materials all are 70% or greater of either brick or brick ephes. The code allows for the brick or something that would meet that intent. And with the style being very significant of what the brick looks like pattern-wise, we did see that that met the intent of the brick.
Thank you. Any additional questions, or anyone who would like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve PC 48-22.
Second.
Calley, Rainey, and additional.
I think it was a tie. You can pick.
Rainey or Williams? We'll let you choose, Ms. Johnson. Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
And Mr. Butler.
Aye. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
We'll move to new business item two, PC Resolution PC 49-22, site plan ViaSat Satellite Earth Station, three acres, map 21, parcel 46.12, property owner Meeting Place Church.
The staff report for PC 49-22, project is 920 Highway 96, ViaSat Satellite Earth Station. Aaron Trigg of Lead Corps Group has submitted the City of Fairview a request for a conditional use permit for ViaSat Satellite Earth Station to be constructed near the rear of Meeting Place Church, property located at 920 Highway 96. They have also included a site plan for the same project. The property contains three acres and is zoned RS 40. The intent of the site plan, oh, sorry, the intent letter was included in the staff report. I won't read all of that. But there were several general questions of what's being built and those answers provided by the applicant. The applicant, which is Aaron Trigg, is requesting a site plan approval following the conditional use application, which was approved tonight from Boza. They're proposing ingress egress to the project with means of one access easement through the parking lot of Meeting Place Church. Plan sheets have been provided showing the location, dimension, and design of the Satellite Earth Station. Conditions of approval included in Planning Commission Resolution PC 49-22 for ViaSat Satellite Earth Station, plans set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction meeting, provide documentation of all state and federal permits prior to pre-construction meeting. Approval of development plan should be valid for one year from the date of Planning Commission approval. Any modification to the approved plans shall be submitted to the city for review and may result in Planning Commission reconsideration.
Thank you, sir. If we have anyone from the applicant here who would like to say or present anything?
Yes, my name is Crystal Orloff, and I'm the project manager from ViaSat. Aaron Trigg actually reports to me. And I have a presentation along with, he's going to play the presentation, and then I actually have some examples of what an actual facility looks like. It's cartoonish. I apologize.
Could you speak into the microphone, please? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
And you have an idea of how cable internet works? Well, maybe not. But what is satellite[672.95][673.03]internet? It's an internet signal from space, which makes it available virtually everywhere and anywhere. That sounds pretty cool, but how does it work? Before we get into that, it's important to understand the concept of geostationary orbit. This complicated sounding term refers to an orbital pattern many satellites use that positions them 22,500 miles away, directly above the equator, and exactly matches the Earth's rotation. This means that, from our perspective, the satellite stays in the exact same position in the sky all the time as the Earth itself is spinning. Here's a fun fact. In order to stay in exact rotation with the Earth at that distance, the satellites are cruising along at about 1.91 miles per second, or nearly 7,000 miles per hour. Okay, why is this helpful to anyone? Satellites act like mirrors, allowing us to bounce information from one point on the globe to another. Because these satellites are stationary, so to speak, we always know where to find them. These satellites connect to dishes on the ground called earth terminals. Did you know that ViaSat currently has a fleet of satellites, with more to come, to keep our millions of users both in the air and on the ground connected? Now we can talk about how this all works. Since you're probably already familiar with satellite television, let's start there to introduce the equipment it takes to make this happen. Each satellite TV subscriber has an antenna installed on their home, and that antenna is constantly pointed at the same position in the sky where the TV satellite is. When a customer turns on their TV, the programming is getting beamed from the TV station's gateway to the satellite, directly to the antenna outside, and fed to the TV. Because TV customers only receive a signal, meaning nothing is being sent back to the satellite, this signal is called one-way. Now, think about a website you use often, like any social media site. When you look at someone else's photo, you are receiving data. When you upload a picture, you are sending data. So satellite internet customers need a two-way signal, which means it's flowing in both directions at the same time. That's where we come in. Every time a satellite internet customer accesses the internet, there's a constant, nearly instantaneous connection between their device, a wireless router, a modem, an antenna, the satellite, the earth terminal, and the internet. Depending on the customer, we have different types of antennas and modems, whether they're in the air, a disaster relief center, in the government, at a business, or in a home. So thanks to this amazing technology and our growing fleet of satellites, we can serve our wide variety of customers. Now that is pretty cool.
Excellent. Any questions? This was on the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting prior for a conditional use application. So Boza did approve that. So if you were present, you got to learn a little bit more about it, but.
So one of the things that it states that typically, they're less than 10 feet tall.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Collins said that you planned for yours to be five feet.
Yes, ma'am.
And seven meters in diameter. What would, will that be the size?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. This is an unmanned facility. We will go out there and check for maintenance, make sure there's no weeds.
And there is a fence around the entire perimeter, a see-through fence for safety reasons. And we talked about, or mentioned some screening in Boza. Is there some plants or shrubs planned for it?
We can, we can work with the Planning Commission for that.
I think from the, from the road, the depth of the back of the property that it's going to be at, you may not be able to see it from the road, but the residential properties behind it may be more in line of sight from it.
It is within the 40-foot setback from the rear property line, though, so.
It's 40.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So will this program provide services to the community?
Yes, as long as they, if they sign up for the services. That's correct.
So like competing with Comcast or?
With ViaSat directly.
Yeah. So they're a provider for services.
With, with ViaSat directly. Once we launch our satellite.
And how in depth will it reach our rural areas here in Fairview?
We're, we're providing to rural areas, rural communities. That's, that's our platform right now.
And it's a strong signal?
Yes, yes.
So school, age children will be able to pick up, and those who work from home?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Anyone who would like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve 49-22, PC 49-22.
Second.
Calley and Williams, any additional questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
And Mr. Butler.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to hand over items three and four to Ms. Senyard. I'm going to accuse myself of having a client with interest in these parcels.
New business item three, PC Resolution PC-50-22, final plat, Richville Estates, Phase One, 20 lots on 10.11 acres, map 043, parcel 023, property owner Richville, Richland Estates, LLC. Is there anyone here to speak as a representative? Staff report, Bobby.
I'll do a quick staff report. Staff report for PC 50-22. So Richville Estates, Phase One, final plat. Adam Sanders of SCC, Inc. has submitted to the City of Fairview a request for final plat approval for Richville Estates, Phase One project. This project is zoned RM 20 pud and has 20 proposed single-family residential building lots. Following staff comments will be included in the Planning Commission Resolution PC 50-22. Plat book and page number shall be added to the final plat prior to signature, showing the recording of the HOA documents. Conditions of approval included in the Planning Commission Resolution PC 50-22 for Richville Estates, Phase One final plat. As-built survey shall be provided to and approved by staff prior to the signing of the final plat. Revision to the final plat to provide plat book and page numbers for HOA documents. An approval of the final plat shall be valid for filing for one year from the date of Planning Commission approval. Any modification to the approved plat shall be submitted to the city for review and may result in Planning Commission reconsideration. That's all.
Thanks. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
That Anderson?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard. And Ms. Williams.
Aye.
New business item four, PC Resolution PC 51-22, final plat, Richville Estates, Phase Two, 20 lots on 16.86 acres, map 043, parcel 023, property owner Richland Estates, LLC. Would you like to read the staff report?
Staff report for PC 51-22 is very similar to 50-22. Mr. Adam Sanders of SCC, Inc. has submitted to the City of Fairview a request for final plat for Richville Estates, Phase Two. The Phase Two section development contains 20 proposed single-family residential building lots. The following staff comments will be included in the Planning Commission Resolution. Add the following note to the final plat prior to signature. Air conditioning, HVAC, home-specific mechanical systems, and accessory structures shall not be placed within any public utility and drainage easement, PUDE. Critical lots are missing from plat per the approved plans. Existing contours show indicate there are multiple lots with pre-development slopes 15% or higher. Update plat to design critical lots as required by City Code for staff review prior to signature. Plat book and page number shall be added to the final plat prior to the signature, showing the recording of HOA documents. With conditions of approval to include, as-built survey shall be provided to and approved by staff prior to the signing of the final plat. Revisions to the final plat addressing all staff comments included in PC-51-22. An approval of the final plat should be valid for filing for one year from the date of Planning Commission approval. Any modification to the approved plat shall be submitted to the city for review and may result in Planning Commission reconsideration. That's all.
Thanks. Is there a motion?
I've got a question. How many discrepancies did you have? It sounded like you had like five or six that you had to have completed prior to.
You mean the, the staff comment?
Yes.
Yeah, so there was a few lots that were designated critical on the site plan that just need to be notified or noted on the final plat with an asterisk. That's typically the way they're identified. And basically, the natural grade exceeding 15% shown, and then what that requires during the residential, you know, residential submittal process for each individual lot is a specific grading plan that addresses those steeper slopes and has, has more requirements with that submittal.
Now, this developer is not building them himself. He's going to sell these lots off to other builders, correct?
I'm not, I'm not sure on that.
Okay, well, it sounds like you've got several discrepancies that need to be identified in the drawings. And for that reason, I'm, I'm going to vote no and, and say he needs to send, sit down and with his land planner and architect and identify these issues a little further before we vote on this rig.
For clarification, are we, we're just voting on the, on the, on the plats that are shown, right? The critical lots are removed, so that is not until it meets your requirements?
So the lot, there are lots on this final plat that would need to be designated as critical, based on current, or based on pre-development slope, which would then, during the permit process, require that grading plan for the lot, rather than just a two-dimensional layout, site layout. It would be, you have to look at grading and that kind of thing. So with those just being designated on that, as they are in the, in the final plan, in the approved plans, that would take care of that requirement.
Does any of that, that you will have to go through with them, require us to pass this in order for you to have that conversation?
I don't believe so. I think just identifying the ones that were shown and based on, basically looking at pre-development slopes, overlaying that on what we have and designating those that way. It just requires a little bit more with the site layout to make sure that the slopes are taken care of and that it's not going to cause any issues, so.
Do you feel that they have satisfactorily addressed your comments to the point where you're comfortable that that could be managed during the final?
I feel like that can be managed at the staff level as far as, as long as those are identified. And if there is a discrepancy between staff and applicant, that would, that could potentially come back. That was their request.
When you, when you, when you say as long as those are identified, what do you mean by that? Like, how would those not be identified?
Well, if there's a, I guess if there's a disagreement between what we would call a critical lot and what they would call a critical lot, then it could be brought forth for reconsideration at the planning commission level.
When that, when those items are submitted to the staff, when the staff does, they do a pre- and post-inspection for the slopes and building envelope for that site. So in the pre-inspection, if it, if the staff recognizes that that slope, that that lot is a critical lot or has those slopes, then the staff communicates that back out to the builder or the contractor, whoever is developing that. And they're not allowed to proceed until those slopes are remedied, subject to the city's regulations one way or the other. If there, so the, if this plat is approved, then the plat is simply the overlay. The individual lots carry the individual inspection, and we do a pre- and post-on each one. So if that lot, description by the staff, if we looked at the pre-inspection or the pre-work, and we determine that those slopes deem that lot to be a critical lot, if the builder or developer agrees with that, then we'll work with them to make sure that everything done on that site is remedied prior to them being able to do any work. If there was a, if there was a discrepancy where the staff believed that it meets a critical lot and the developer or builder believes that it does not, then they could bring that decision to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission will be the decider on whether or not that is a critical lot. So the critical lot thresholds would be met either through staff agreement, understanding the pre- and post-construction layout of the lot. If there's a discrepancy, it comes to you, and you are the decision-maker to determine whether or not that lot individually can be developed as proposed.
I guess my only other question, then to piggyback on this. If a lot is exceeding the percentage of grade, sometimes the remedy is you, you have to address the, the access drive that's feeding the property. So do we feel comfortable that even though you might have individual lots, there's not a negative impact to either runoff, retainage, or, you know, adjacent development?
Yeah, so any, any, any grading that's different than what was in the approved plans would have to be addressed either, if it's very minor, it could be a staff level, but if it's something that's deemed a significant change, it would have to come back for the planning commission.
Once, once the site plan and construction plans are approved, any activity on an individual lot, in any individual lot that has a negative impact on those construction plans is going to have to be remedied at the staff level to remedy that. If their remedy cannot be found, or if there's a discussion of discrepancy, then that comes back to the Planning Commission, and they either have to identify remedy for that lot or a change to the construction plans to manage the stormwater runoff if it were affected.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Collins, who monitors that, when you say can, does that mean shall, required, or optional for them to come back?
When I, it's always shall. Those, those regulations are to be met. The discussion as it relates to the slope is interpretation by the staff. If the staff looks at the pre- and post of that lot, let's say that the staff believes that it exceeds the regulations and is deemed a critical lot, then the staff will work with that developer to, to correct that. If an agreement can be met, it will come back to you. But there's no exception for the stormwater being met. That's always a shall. And then the staff will work within that shall designation to ensure that it takes place.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second. Any additional discussion or questions?
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey, I'm sorry, Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
No.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Head number five, PC Resolution PC 52-22, rezoning 7319 Wiley Circle, 7.52 acres, current zoning RS 40, proposed zoning RS 15, map 42, a parcel 005.00, property owner Living Large, LLC. If there's a representative here that has anything for us, just state your name for me, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Nathan McVay with T-Square Engineering. The parcel before you is 7.52 acres, currently zoned RS 40. We're requesting RS 15. The comp plan shows this parcel sort of split between two different areas. The comp plan shows this parcel sort of split between two different areas. One is residential transition neighborhood, which allows the RS 15, and the other's legacy neighborhood, which allows the, the R 20 district. It borders the, the town center, which would be towards your, look at the site plan there, toward your southeast. The max density for this under the RS 15 zoning would be 21 lots. However, we've been talking with the Water Authority of Dixon County, and due to the capacity, we're going to be capped at 20 lots. So the max lots for this parcel would be 20. WADC will serve this via grinder pumps on a conventional system. I can answer any other questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sullivan, I skipped you, but I think there's not much on staff comments.
I was going to say, Mr. McVay hit just about everything with that. One thing I will say, and he alluded to the town center there, but that zoning is Main Street mixed-use, which is a PUD overlay just to the south of that. So density-wise, there will be some pretty, pretty dense multifamily and single-family within the PUD there to the south.
I just, are your streets, are they going to be interconnected with the Town Center Way? Are they going to just be totally independent?
That's to be decided. We've talked with staff about that a couple of different ways, the possibility of giving them a stub or keeping this kind of separate towards the existing neighborhood and not allowing through traffic. So I'd say that's to be decided with, with staff at this point.
I mean, Town Center Way is going to have walkways that's going to go around and stuff, and it'd be, if it's possible, be ideal to intertwine that. I mean, the whole objective of Town Center is to have a connection to the surrounding area and Bowie Park and everything else, so...
Sure. And we've drawn the concept both ways, so we can really go either option there.
After infrastructure and everything's taken into account, roadways and all that, what does that leave for size of the lots on the 20 that you've mentioned? Do you know if that offhand or...
Well, the minimum would be 15,000. You know, there's some ponds and different things, required open space. I think some of the bigger ones were up towards 20,000 square feet, and so you'll get some good-sized lots, especially in the corners, but the minimum wouldn't be below 15,000.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second? Second. McDonald and Anderson, any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aha.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
No.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
No.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye. Thank you, sir. That ends new business. Bonds and letters of credit. Wash 37062 Reclamation Bond, 255,400. No action needed on these, just read, just reading them for the minutes. Reserves on Chester, Section 1. Stabilization Bond, 565,000. Reserves on Chester, Section 2. Stabilization Bond of 337,500. Reports for discussion and information. City planning staff. Mr. Sullivan?
I have nothing tonight.
Yes, sir. City manager, Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City engineer, Mr. Blackburn?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Thank you, sir. City attorney, Mr. Potter?
Report, sir.
Yes, sir. We'll move to communication from the Planning Commission members. Mr. Callie?
Just want to thank the staff for their work.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Williams?
Good morning, my colleague. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Mayor Rainey?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you. Ms. Senyard?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Magnner?
No comment. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. McDonald?
Uh, one call-out. I'm curious if we can do like some sort of work session slash training session regarding the new IDT, just navigating that?
Yeah.
I think it would go a long way. I mean, it's, you can find it, but I think there's got to be a better way than the way I'm going about it, so...
If we can have one more month before we do that...
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, the side that we see is different from what you see on the commissioner's side. So seeing the couple of issues and then talking back with the development team on that lets us try to work through a couple of things. I know they're working through a couple of issues right now with what can be seen on each side and so forth, as well as Emily last month had a couple of issues with some like favorites type things, where she'd go back and look at them quickly. Once we get a couple of those issues ironed out, I do want to do just a quick run-through of that, but I do want to get a couple more issues ironed out before we get into it in case there are changes. I don't want to have to do several months back-to-back changing up the way we're, we're going with it.
Perfect.
But saying that, any issue you have, our phones and emails are wide open. Shoot us an email, give us a call, hey, something's not working, and we'll try to work through that with you as best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Ms. Shulist?
Do we have any upcoming work sessions? We haven't had any in a couple of months.
Training-wise, we met our training requirements for the year early in the year, so we do have that taken care of for the year. I know that there are a couple of new regulations and new wordings that we're looking at in our regs that we want to present. We'll probably do that this month, or this year, but there are also a couple of developments coming through that have asked to have a work session. So I would assume probably September, there will be a work session, possibly October as well. Past that, there might be a couple more, just depending on where that goes, and a couple of those may be with BOC as well. Ms. Johnson, if you've got anything to add to that?
I, I know those developments coming in are going to be a little bit time-consuming. A couple of those are newer, a couple are also kind of revisits of some old items that have been brought to you before, where they've cleaned those up a little bit and they're asking for those. So half of them will be work, questions asked, and some of them will be a straight review from where we've been before. Luckily, what we, we have seen on what will come back to you, the developers have really cleaned some work up for us, so they've paid attention to some of the questions that have been asked to make that a little bit easier. But to answer your question, we'll likely again have September and October. I know we will not do December, possibly November, depending on what that, that schedule looks like for any new business that comes along.
Got it. What's the status of adopting zoning and all the things that we worked on earlier in the year, in last year?
So obviously, all the commercial work has been done. We did have a work session with the Board of Commissioners last week regarding some tree ordinance updates. We're working to incorporate some of those. We had a planning meeting Monday, and the staff is working to complete those. My guess is if we see all that work, you're probably 90 days or so from being able to see a document enough to review. What we'll likely do is have a work session with the group, Planning Commission and BOC, to kind of highlight some of the bigger changes and then deliver the entire document set to both groups, and then come in with a work session just to answer any questions you may have. Our thinking is right now, we would have about six weeks of review of those to give everyone time to fall in with that. Calendar-wise, we're probably December, January from an actual action item to be considered on that. So the total rewrite is substantial. Sarah's here. We get to see Sarah about, I don't know, one hour every two weeks or so. She's been kind of buried into that stuff for the last three months or so. The rewrite itself, again, was much larger than what we thought. The old documents and old regs were just that, and trying to figure out what changes you make that have a collateral effect on other sections has really slowed us down. So that's where, I apologize for the delay, but there's been a little more work than we thought that was going to be to get that out.
Got it. That's it for me.
Nothing further. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.